I will now call to order the regular meetings of the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, Victorville Water District, and City Council of the City of Victorville. As customary, we'll have our invocation, our Pledge of Allegiance. Our invocation tonight will be given by Pastor Ray again from the Jubilee Community Church. That will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Captain Mark Taylor, who will also introduce his replacement for the City of Victorville. Pastor?
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the city that we live in and the city that we call home. We also thank you tonight, Lord, for these leaders that you have given to us, and we pray your blessing on them, and we pray your blessing on this meeting tonight. Just impart your wisdom and your direction. Let every decision that's made tonight be in accordance with your will. In Jesus' name. Amen.
... of the United States of America into public or which is fair. One nation, under God, indivisible, with all
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As you know, in the Sheriff's Department, sometimes they move us around. And effective June 6th, I will be the commander of the Scientific Investigations Division in San Bernardino. And Cliff Reynolds, who is no stranger to you folks on the council, Cliff was here as a lieutenant and was the executive officer with me before he got promoted to captain about three years ago. He is coming from the Barstow Station and coming back to Victorville, back home. So just wanted to let you guys know where we're at.
That's another Barstow boy made good. That's two of us, two in this city now.
Actually, he's coming home.
Welcome home.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
We now have some special presentations, and I'll have Mike join me. We have another three recipients that we're going to recognize tonight. Their families are going to receive our replica, the banners that will hang under light standards. And these are men and women in the armed forces who are serving in Afghanistan or Iraq. And the first one we have is Richard Bev. He's serving in Afghanistan. His mother and father will be accepting the replica.
We're just really proud of Rick. He's going on 30 years in the service. He's 10 years in the Marine Corps, and then the last 20 have been in the Army. All four of the kids are really proud of their dad.
Next, we have Indiar Bell with the Marine Corps, serving in Afghanistan. His wife Natasha will accept the replica.
I just want to say that my husband has been in the Marine Corps for two years. He comes back August 2nd, and he's currently in Afghanistan. And I did this because I'm really proud of him, so.
Next, we have Jamie L. Velazquez with the Air Force, serving in Afghanistan. Mother still and father accepting the replica.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you for the city for affording this. It makes us really proud of the city. Thank you, officers of the city. And I'd like to say how proud we are of our son. Even though he didn't have to go, he volunteered to deploy. And we didn't like it at first, but we're so proud of him. Thank you. Good night. Thank you.
And again, once again, you know, we have to acknowledge the fact that we're very proud of the men and women who still volunteer to go into the armed forces and serve our country. So thank you very much for their service. We have a proclamation here, and this is for Charlotte, Chick. Will you come forward, please? This proclamation is in recognition for her many years of service to the Route 66 Museum. She's been there for a very, very long time, and we appreciate all the work you've done on behalf of you. And Betty have been the stars of this. If it wasn't for you, it wouldn't be worth that now. So this is our way of saying thank you, and we'd like to give you this proclamation.
I'm not sure that in all of my 78 years I've ever been speechless, but I almost am right now. I kept asking Paul and Elle and Betty, what am I doing here? Why did I have to come here? And they said, well, we think maybe a proclamation for the museum. I want to say thanks to the city for the support that they have given us. And we just love our mayor's trophy at our car show, and we know you're going to pony up, aren't you, sir? They kept asking me, am I going to get the money from the mayor? And I said, of course, I always do. Anyway, thank you very, very much. This is a big shock, and I'm very proud. Thank you, Mike.
And on behalf of the board members and the volunteers, we would like to present you with another little token of our appreciation. You've done so much for us. And I know your feet aren't that big, but your shoes are hard to fill.
Now, this is one of those unsung-type things that you hardly hear about. You almost take it so much for granted that the Route 66 Museum would have been down there and stayed down and operated. And there are so many people that come in and volunteer, so many businesses and builders and everybody that have donated over the years to maintain that. Truly, our identity, the roots of our identity went into the Route 66 Museum, and without it there, people would have been flying by and never known where Victorville was. This is such an incredible benefit to the city, and Chick, I love you.
We also have a proclamation, and if we could have Chico Garza and Leah Cash. They're with the Superintendent of Samuel County Schools. And we're celebrating Foster Care Month, National Foster Care Month. And Leah will accept, and as well as Chico, accept the resolution promoting and recognizing the month. And also, we'll have Leah give us a little brief explanation, or Chico.
I want to say that first, thank you, Mayor Cabralas, and distinguished members of the City Council and the City of Victorville for this honor. I accept this honor on behalf of Dr. Gary Thomas, the county superintendent of schools, the county Board of Education members, and also the hundreds and hundreds of foster youth that are being served here in this high desert. So this is a great honor for them to be able to see it as they come through the Foster Youth Services Yes Center we have on I Street in Manaloa there in Hisberya. So thank you again, okay?
Thank you. This is, as I've explained to me last week when we talked about this, is a service that's provided to the foster children because they seem to fall through the cracks in school and so on. So they, through their services, they're giving them the support that they need so they can continue with their school. So thank you very much for your service. Thank you.
But all the fun's going to start now.
Oh, yeah.
They're smart. We're now going to our agendas, and the first item for all the agendas is the public comment. And I do have, let's see, Sam Maskey?
Item number one.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and everybody here. I'm actually representing my company, Denko Enterprises. We own two Denny's, one off Seventh Street and up Main in Hisberya. For last one year, basically, we've been having a very huge problem on the weekends. And this problem is basically caused by the bar across the street, teasers. I have a report from the PD for one year ending January, and it's affecting our clientele. We are losing those families that used to come on the weekends just because of this bar crowd. And lately, it's gone completely out of hands. People have been carrying guns to the store. And I just wanted to know, you know, I believe in the past, this bar was shut down, but that's not what I'm requesting. If there's anything else we can, you know, do to enforce something, because it's basically, it looks like it's showing up a bad image to the city as well. We've been getting a lot of complaints from Denny's corporate, as we are the franchises, pointing the same issue over and over again. And for some reason, people feel that it's not safe to go to that business on the weekends with family and kids. So I was just requesting if anything could be done regarding the matter.
That's the appropriate department. I'll call you and get together.
Definitely. Thank you so much.
Dorothy Miller?
Dorothy Miller, I have a couple of things to pass on. Number one is I finally, after one year, nine months, I got my water bill and trash bill together. I fell over. I thought, gee, how wonderful. Okay, the second thing I want to mention, it's really my opinion, and it's really bothering me. I thought the general manager was going to really get down to business and get things straightened out. But I'm sorry, I have a feeling that he's going back with the good old guys, the ones that's been here for years and years and years. And it seems like things are getting back the same way they were. And I really hope and pray that Jim can get things going in the right direction. Thank you.
That's all I have, all the cards I have where I'm at number one?
Oh, okay.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Norman Miller. Excuse me, and I'm here on behalf of the Golden Triangle Ad Hoc Committee tonight. And I've turned in about five of these cards over the last, well, I'd say the last year because I haven't been here for about six months. But I've turned these cards in, and I've never gotten a response from the card as far as putting Eucalyptus Street through from, through to 395. The fire department is about ready to be opened with the park, and we really need access for the fire trucks to get to 395 in case there's an accident or to the west side of 395. Because the way it is right now, they have to travel through housing, residential streets to get to either Sycamore or Bear Valley to go west to get onto 395. And I think that's not a very time, a proper time way of doing it. It's going to slow them down, and we know what kind of traffic's on Bear Valley Road. So anything that can be done to get that through would be greatly appreciated, especially the 200 or the 150 people that signed a petition for that that have not heard anything about that. And the other thing is, I noticed there's some sidewalks being built on Mesa Linda, which is great. I think it's probably for the school kids. I'd like to see maybe something could be done on Sycamore to get the rest of the sidewalks in there over to Mesa Linda, because there's kids walking on that street also. Thank you.
Thank you. And someone will get back to you. We'll now go into our agendas, and the first one is our Library Board Trustees Agenda. Do we have any revisions?
No revisions.
So we do have the consent calendar.
Move for approval?
Second. That will be followed by the Rail Authority and also the SCLA, California Logistics Airport Authority, and those, the chair is Mr. Caldwell.
You, Mayor Cabralas, item three is the consent calendar with two items, A and B. It'd be adopted with one motion.
Move for approval?
In a second.
Somebody to thank you, Solomon?
Wait, wait. What's going on? Okay, I moved it. You seconded it?
I said first, but that's okay. It doesn't matter.
That completes the Rail Authority Agenda. The Airport Authority Agenda, item three, consent calendar with two items. Motion would be in order.
For approval?
Second.
Item four is a request to authorize a contract advance corporation for the SCLA engine run-up Phase II, total amount $84,919.
Move approval?
Second.
That would conclude the Airport Authority Agenda.
Well, now I'll go into the Victorville Redevelopment Agency Agenda. Do we have any revisions?
No revisions.
Consent calendar, item number three.
Move approval?
Second.
For call though, may I get a vote from you?
Next is the Victorville Water District Agenda. Do we have any revisions?
No revisions.
Do we have a public hearing? Item number three. It's a public hearing called to hear arguments for or against initiating proceedings to fix, levy, and collect water standby assessments for the fiscal year 2008, 2009. It's accompanied by a resolution 09004.
Are you going to open the public hearing?
Yes, I will. And also, a resolution number 09005. I will now open up the public hearing. I'm wishing to, anyone wishing to speak on behalf of item number three, want to report or oppose? Forward.
Dorothy Miller, I'm still opposed to paying the $15 per acre and Victor Valley Water being absolutely different than what Baldi Mesa is. The two of them should be together. As long as the city's running the whole situation, everything should be put together. It should not be this one does this, that one does that, somebody else does something else. This is not right. It is not right. So you people really need to sit down and figure the thing out and get it so everybody does the same thing, because it's not good. Thank you.
What do you have?
Norman Miller, and I think you got cards from us, didn't you, to speak?
Yes, yes, there is a card.
Yes.
The only comment I have on that is, I was noticed in the agenda information that the District One is putting in about $86,000 a year on their standby fees, and District Two, Baldi Mesa, is putting in $326,000 a year. I wonder, how is that split up? Does that go 50-50 for both of the areas, or is that $326,000 kept to the original Baldi Mesa area?
I can answer the question if you want me to. Mr. and Council, the local agency formation commission, when they conducted the hearings and offered the alternatives in regard to the Baldi Mesa Water District and the Victor Valley Water District, provided, excuse me, provided both alternatives, that bookkeeping and incomes and expenditures of the district be kept separate until such time as all debts were completed by the Victor Valley, Victor Valley Water District, number one, did not have a debt, but the Baldi Mesa Water District, called District Number Two, did. It's the, they even have a separate and a different rate, and they required that the bonds be paid and the debts be paid, and at such time as all debts were paid, there is leave an intent that it becomes one district as a merged district. But it was LaFco's policy, and it's, I understand it, and I have revisited that again since I have moved from the Water District to the city. It's not within the council's purview to combine those and combine the funding, and the funding must be kept separate and must be accounted for separately until that debt is completely paid.
I know you sit on the board, so you're well aware of what's going on. The reason that the people in Baldi Mesa are upset is that Victor Valley Water District has a policy that if you have a meter, you do not pay the standby fee any longer. Whereas in Baldi Mesa, and my husband sat on the board and served my son, we've been hooked up with the meter, and we're still paying our standby fee for our property. And we've had a meter since the day we bought our property back in 1980. This, the first bond that was, that was in place was paid off in 1999, and, no, wait, yes, 99.
69 and 99.
And then a new one was issued because we have the treatment plant, we build the treatment plant, and it's been in place for 10 years. Is there any way, Jim, that you could find out what the balance would be and how long we would have to pay the $15?
Absolutely, we'll look at that.
I'd appreciate it, because I'd like to know myself.
Okay, I will, yes, I will look at that.
Okay, and the reason is, the difference in price is because we all pay it, Mr. Miller, not just the people that have bare land.
I'm sure, and I think there's a lot more non-water metered customers in the Baldi Mesa area than there is in the Victor Valley area.
Exactly true.
So there may be some trade-off in that area there. My last question would be, the money that's coming from this bond, and as you say, it was probably for the water treatment plant, but now that we don't have the growth that we expected to have when this bond was passed, what's happening to that money that's coming in over and above some of the major items that were done within the last couple, three years? What happens to that money? Does it go into a reserve? Does it pay back the bond, or how is that used?
Rather than guess, I'm going to, I don't see Reggie, oh, there's Reggie. If you happen to know, otherwise, I'd rather research it and make sure it's actual. If you know, I ask him. I don't know the answer to that.
Issue. I appreciate that.
Back to you.
One of the things, though, that what the resolutions do is that they need to be visited every year.
Oh, yes.
And you have to be passed, otherwise, if you don't, it takes, you know, to get back on track.
No, I understand that. We, yeah, that's true. We always did every year.
Any other comment?
Mayor, I can answer the question, actually, only because in meeting with the team that I assembled for the presentation at 5 o'clock, we discussed this thoroughly with the water CFO. And there's approximately $6.5 million remaining in that bond issuance that could be held, 6.5 million, yes. It could be held for future capital. At this point, it may be more beneficial to pay down the amount of that bond issue and retire that debt sooner, and that's something that he, I know, has already started to look at as a result of the meetings that we've had.
That's exactly what Baldi Mesa was doing with that excess money that they had put aside. They were going to pay that bond down.
Right, originally, there was two treatment plants that were planned.
Yes.
Because of the merger and because of changes in the structure of the systems, the second treatment plan is no longer needed. So there probably is a very good opportunity to pay down those bonds and retire that debt sooner, which would then end the difference in the two districts. One thing to keep in mind is that ID2, former Baldi Mesa Water District customers have actually, as a result of the consolidation, ended up paying less money on a monthly basis. There was an additional surcharge that has since gone away since the merger.
Baldi Mesa?
Yes.
Only I wasn't paying that, so.
Yeah, that was, I believe, $4 per month, if I'm not mistaken, Reggie.
Was it $4, Bob?
There was another fee, though, that actually went away as a result. But I'm sure Steve will get a full report together very quickly.
We will make a full report, cover all those bases. Good questions.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
The other one that wishes to address the City Council, on item number three, for the public hearing. Mary Nunn, I will close the public hearing, and I would entertain a motion for resolution, for both A and B resolutions.
Move for approval?
Second.
Now going to the consent calendar, item number four.
For approval?
Second.
Councilmember Almond, thank you.
Item number five is a request to approve amendment number one to the General Services Provider Agreement with Concord Communications Group Incorporated for additional installations of PMI water meters in the amount of $68,840 and extend the term to June 30, 2009.
For approval?
Second.
Mayor Cabralas, may I get a vote from you?
Item number six is a request to adopt resolution number VWD 09006, resolution of the Board of Directors of the Victorville Water District approving promissory note in favor of Victorville Water District Water Enterprise Fund. entertain a motion? No move.
I also had a card on number six.
For item number six, go ahead.
Couple of questions I had on that. Is this promissory note? What guarantee is there that this money is going to be paid back in five years if things don't go right, which has happened in the past?
The way that this agreement is set up is that this should be a temporary loan in, because the staff and bond counsel is currently in the process of negotiating bonds for the wastewater plant that's going to be built, and when it does so, this water will, this will be paid back. If that isn't successfully negotiated, this is set up so that it can continue for a period not to exceed five years. And knowing that it must be paid back in five years, it not only can be paid back in five, must be paid back, but the Water District can actually make a demand on the city and its assets. So, it's not a, a debt that the city can refuse to pay or turn its back on. It is a separate legal authority, a separate legal entity, and it has the right to collect the debt from the city.
So, I'm a little confused on it. If they don't have the money to pay it back, where does the money come from? Or if the money's not generated by the?
The, the city has essentially, hopefully, short-term, but if something happens, they have a five-year period. They can't avoid it. They, they have to pay it back.
Well, I've been told that this has happened in the past. I think it was for SCLA, where the city had loaned SCLA, I think it was five million or six million dollars. And instead of paying it back, they just wrote it off the end of the year and then reestablished it the next year, and it never had got paid off. So, I just don't want to see that happening to the Water District.
And I understand, if SCLA, which is a part of the city, even though it's a, the books are kept as an entity at the airport, or if the general fund, or from any department, the council has the right to loan the money and, in effect, write it off if they want to. But this is a separate entity, although they're acting on behalf, they couldn't, they're not in the position of writing this off, because the Water District has a debt, the money technically belongs to all the ratepayers in the Water District, and they're entitled to collect the debt. And if the, my, my guess is, and I'll ask the attorney to confirm this, but it is my belief, if for some reason the council decided two, three, four years from now, well, we're not going to pay it back, my understanding is that the ratepayer can initiate an action that causes it to be paid back. They can't quit paying it back, is my understanding.
That's absolutely correct.
Okay, my last question is, any of the standby fee money's going to be used for this?
I, I have no idea. I'm sorry, I see Reggie saying no, but I will make sure that you get an answer on that. I don't know why it would be, but we'll make sure.
Don't want to see that one.
No reason for the standby money to be used for this.
Gone to some other entity. Thank you. Dorothy, you also had a card here.
Dorothy Miller, using the water money for the treatment plant does not benefit everyone in the city. Actually, they're not all in the city. Some of it is in the county. Baldi Mesa, a lot of area is county, not city. The city has not taken that area over. They've taken some of us over, but not all of them. Money will be paid back. I've heard that story before. Things don't get done, and that's something that bothers me, just like the water bill. It took forever to get that done. How long's it going to take to get this money back? We shouldn't be paying it in the first place. Baldi Mesa, in, I believe, now, this is my opinion, and I believe, they bought property for the treatment plant. Now, this is what I heard, this is what I was told. Now, I'd really like to find out. If Baldi Mesa bought the property, shouldn't everybody pay for it? Not just Baldi Mesa. Everything is landing up on Baldi Mesa, and I don't feel that's right. It's not right. Thank you.
Going to item number two, which is revisions to the agenda. entertain a rebuttal?
There is a need to add a closed session for the City Council, so the government code five-four-nine-five-four-point-two-B-two. It would be to discuss pending threat and litigation on closed session under government code five-four-nine-five-six-point-nine-B-two. As a result of meetings held with the city manager on Friday after the posting of the agenda, we are in receipt of information that may lead the city into potential litigation, and we'd like to discuss it with you and add it and make the finding that the, there's an immediate need to take action on the item, and the item rose after the posting of the agenda.
Second?
Second.
Okay.
Mayor Cabrealis, may I get a vote from you on that item? There are two other revisions to the agenda. One is the appeal hearing item, number three. The appellant has requested a withdrawal of the appeal. And then on item number six, the presentation by Starpoint Solar has been requested to be removed by the city manager.
Thank you. We have item number four, which is a public hearing. Public hearing called to hear arguments for or against introduction of ordinance number twenty-two-thirty-seven, entitled and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victorville amending various sections of chapter two-point-two of the Victorville Municipal Code for the purpose of changing the time of its regular meetings, altering the schedule, scheduling of executive closed sessions, permitting future amendment of meeting time by resolution, and making certain other updating revisions. I will now open up the public hearing on item number four. Do we have anyone that wants to speak on behalf or opposed? Item number four. Done, I will close the public hearing, and I would entertain a motion.
No move. Mayor Cabrealis, I do need to read the title of the ordinance. In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victorville amending various sections of chapter two-point-two-oh of the Victorville Municipal Code for the purpose of changing the time of its regular meetings, altering the scheduling of executive closed sessions, permitting future amendment of meeting time by resolution, and making certain other updating revisions. Move for approval?
That's with waiving for the reading? Or motion to approve with the waiver?
I just wanted to pass so bad. I don't, we'll wait for the re-
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Durorenas.
Councilwoman Caldwell, I need a vote from you on that item. Thank you.
Next, we have item number five, which is a consent calendar.
Move?
Second.
Councilmember Almond, I need a vote from you on that item.
Item number six has been pulled. We'll go to item number seven. Is a request to award contract to Motorola in the amount of fifty thousand, two thousand, two-hundred-and-two and two cents for the purchase of seventeen handheld radios for use by the sheriff's deputies and code importers.
Move for approval?
Second.
Item number eight is a request to authorize staff to proceed with the demolition of Billy's Recreation Center in Poole. entertain a motion?
No move.
Second.
Councilman Caldwell, I need a vote from you.
Item number nine is a request to authorize the proceedings of the use and identification agreement between the city and the Donald D. Pamela J. Lager Trust for the continued use of APN zero-three-nine-six-dash-one-nine-two-dash-four-four. It's a swap transaction.
Second.
Item number ten, request to adopt resolution number zero-nine-zero-three-eight, entitled a resolution of the City Council of the City of Victorville ordering the vacation abandonment of excess right-of-way easement from a Bureau of Land Management patent.
Second.
I clicked it. Pardon?
I couldn't get it to go either. We vote again on that item? I, I saw it click and go away, and then I tried to click it for you.
Thank you.
Could we vote again on that item?
Right, you gotta click motion. Okay, I'll-
Thank you.
There you go.
I did. Now you gotta-
I'll second it.
Thank you. There we go.
Item number eleven, a request to award a contract to Southern California Pipeline Construction Incorporated in the amount of seven million, five-hundred-and-nine-thousand, five-hundred-and-ten dollars for construction of the SCLA sewer trunk line.
For approval? Second.
Hey, just quit lying. I did. You didn't.
There a second?
Second.
I know we have to press far with the pipeline, but the only thing is, I asked Reggie today, and it's, it's not a region company, and apparently, it's the only, it's a little bitter, but I sure wish it could have been some local, some local companies here. Number twelve is a request to adopt resolution number zero-nine-zero-four-one, titled a resolution finding a severe fiscal hardship will exist if additional local property tax funds are seized and additional unfunded mandates are adopted by the state of California. A presentation on this, or, we know we don't want the state to take our money. entertain a motion?
On me?
Move.
Second.
Item, item number thirteen is council reports. I'll start with Ryan.
I'm, just going back to the sewer line. I was briefed by our economic development director, Keith Messler, this morning. That item actually was originally budgeted for, I think, thirteen million, and total costs are coming in around nine, four million dollars less. So, that's, that's, I think, significant good news for us.
Yes, I voted no on the add-on to the agenda. I want to make a point. Took many years to get the staff to understand that they don't just add things to the agenda at will. Went through an effort to accommodate staff by moving the closed session till five o'clock, and I don't want to see us get back into the habit of just because some, it's, it's expedient for somebody that we add stuff on. And I'm, I'm a little irritated that this has happened the very first night that we adopt this new process. We have a front-end closed session, and now we're having a back-end closed session. And I, I hope that it doesn't become a habit like it used to be.
Well, I understood. We could not add it to the five o'clock meeting, because that was a special meeting, and you cannot add any agenda items to a special meeting. And the implementation of the ordinance that was introduced tonight will not take effect until after its second reading. So, the actual five o'clock meetings are not going to occur for about thirty more days.
I have none. Well, now going to closed session.
The closed session adjourned at eight-fifty PM, and there was no reportable action out of closed session.